We've been Josh and Douglas.
It's like got sent.
It's pretty easy. Of course, if they were to do it. I thought it was high side, high side, I think.
Yeah. It looks like the perfect size.
Yeah.
It's not like working very, 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 too big. It's not me.
I probably did the tower.
It's nice.
The wires going through the cable.
Yeah.
Probably didn't, yeah. And there's nothing, there's no like.
Jump across trees.
So like, this was off, but they did.
They made it.
There was a lot of these.
About it.
Yeah.
I mean, the quality of craftsmanship is really first class. I guess that's kind of what you need.
You're going to do a lot of work.
Fit, everything. Some of the stuff in features equipment.
He needs to take you on it.
Yeah.
We talked about it. We'll be doing.
We're still, we're still at 130 blocks.
I have to stay.
Hello. In, in, in your current district, then I could do it.
But is that, do you have to reside?
I don't know. I mean, I own, I own a house in York County and I use that. And I read it out.
I had Paul Gary said, asked him, hey.
So our upstairs center, but now we're driving on the road.
Oh, you can definitely finish.
Maybe, maybe they have so much room, it's ridiculous. We all good?
December 2019, Pecoson City School Board meeting to order. Jamie?
Leading us in the pledge tonight is Henry Ramos. Henry is a second grader in Mrs. Jaeger's class at Pecoson Primary School. Henry's favorite subject is math. Henry is not sure what he wants to do yet when he grows up, but he has plenty of time to figure that out. Henry loves to play games with his family and his favorite color is blue. Today is Henry's birthday, so please wish Henry a happy birthday.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you, Henry. Our inspirational reader for tonight is Mrs. Jordan Butler. Jordan is a second grader in Mrs. Stern's class at Pecoson Primary School. Jordan's favorite subject is science, and she thinks she might be a scientist or veterinarian when she grows up. Jordan's favorite family activity is visiting the park and her favorite color is turquoise.
Hi, my name is Jordan. I am thankful that Pecoson Primary School has given me the opportunity to grow and learn. I am also thankful that I have been able to meet great friends and I have been taught by many amazing teachers. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight.
And Jordan, 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 if you stay in Pecoson, you'll be taught by a lot more amazing teachers. So hang in there. Next is our student presentation, and Miss Stern's second grade class will present this evening their storybook STEM challenge that engaged the five Cs: critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship skills to create their own Thanksgiving Day Parade floats. Students participating are Sebastian O'Conne, Jordan Butler, Lauren Jones, Natalie Kiroz, Liliana De-Pietro. De-Pietro, is that right? De-Pietro, got it, okay. And Charlotte Jordan, take it away. And students, if you'll stay for just a little while after your presentation, we're going to take an intermission in just a few minutes so we talk to you.
These are the second graders from my classroom as well as Mrs. Inslee's class. We participated in a collaborative STEM challenge between two second grade classrooms, mine and Ms. Inslee and some of her students as well. So let's start it. So we started our lesson with a whole group mini lesson on inferencing, and then we went into character traits. So I read aloud the story Balloons Over Broadway, a nonfiction story, to help the students build background and knowledge on the ideas, creation process, and change over time of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. The students learned about the life of the famous puppeteer Tony Sarg, who was the designer and creator of the parade as well as the window displays at the Macy's Day, or at Macy's shopping. We also had a discussion on character traits and holiday family traditions as well during our whole group mini lesson. So the students began by partnering up and working collaboratively together through a design planning process. The students began by working individually through the STEM design process on their own before they joined in with a partner. And here you can see part of their planning kind of packet to help them go through the Here is a student working through that plan. Then the students joined in with a partner and they had to first start by working to collaboratively create and construct their storybook character using a balloon and then certain list of recyclable items and classroom items as well. Here are some of the students working to construct their balloon character. You can see we had a bad seed and we also had a very hungry caterpillar. Students kind of showing off some of their constructions, the pigeon as well as Gracias the Turkey that's here today. Students also had to create a base that would hold up their balloon as they were able to walk through the hallway to present their balloon. So their, their challenge was that they couldn't touch the balloon with their hands, so they had to create a way to hold or prop up the balloon using straws and tape. And this is a picture of Miss Inslee's students who joined in with the process as well. Here is a few of Mrs. Inslee's class and their creations. We then participated in parading through each other's classrooms so the students in both classes could be able to see what the others had created that day. And then my class took their balloons and went on a parade through the main office to show off, and we played Thanksgiving Day music as well. And so the students have brought some of their balloon creations today to share, share with you. So if you all would like to parade around in front and show our guests who you have created, so we have Gracias the Turkey, we have Peter Rabbit, we have Giraffe, we have Little Red Riding Hood. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you all very much. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
And next is recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as Dr. Carter moves over to the podiums, award our recognitions this evening. I'd like to ask first that Elizabeth Jones come forward, please. Is being recognized as the Volunteer of the Month. Mrs. Jones is the Pecoson Primary School PTO president and is also an active member of the elementary and middle school PTOs. Mrs. Jones started working within the Pecoson Primary School PTO in 2012 as the Farm Fresh Receipt Coordinator. During her seven years with Pecoson Primary PTO, Mrs. Jones has helped to coordinate volunteers, organize and facilitate family events to include the carnival, and has volunteered her own time with Helping Hands, a program which helps teachers prepare materials for classroom use. When Mrs. Jones is not working with the PTOs, she is teaching preschool at Trinity Christian Preschool, serving the Pecoson Women's Club as treasurer, and sitting on the Pecoson City School Anti-Bullying Committee as a parent representative. Mrs. Jones and her family moved to Pecoson in 2011, a month before her son Riley was born and her oldest Alexander started kindergarten. We thank Mrs. Jones for ongoing support of Pecoson Primary School and will certainly miss her presence as she moves on to the elementary school next year as her youngest child starts third grade. Please join me again in congratulating and thanking Mrs. Jones for all of her volunteer work. Next, I'd ask that Emmeline DeCarlo come forward, please. She is the Pecoson High School December Student of the Month. She participates in many extracurricular activities such as the Key Club, International Club, Student to Student, the Tidewater Flying Club, Women in Aviation, and Teens for Troops. Emmeline is captain of the varsity sailing team and a member of track and field. She's the president of French National Honor Society and a member of Mu Alpha Theta and the National Honor Society. Finally, she has served 400-plus hours of community service with the Pecoson Sailing Foundation. After graduation from PHS, Emmeline hopes to attend the Air Force Academy to become a pilot. Please join me in congratulating Emmeline on being the Senior of the Month this month. Now we'd like to recognize two recipients of All-State Sailing Honors, so first I'd ask that Jack McKenna come forward, please.
Jack is a senior at Pecoson High School who was selected as All-State Skipper for Virginia Interscholastic Sailing Association. He started sailing competitively at eight years of age and has been on the PHS Sailing Team since he was in eighth grade. Jack became a team captain in 11th grade. He teaches sailing at the Hampton Yacht Club and sail Nauticus in Norfolk for disadvantaged children. Jack has applied to the Merchant Marine Academy and the Naval Academy and will sail whichever college he attends. Please join me in congratulating Jack on being recognized for All-State Sailing Honors.
And we'd like to bring Emmeline DeCarlo forward again, please. She is also a senior at Pecoson High School who was selected as the All-State Crew and All-State Women's Crew for Virginia Interscholastic Sailing Association. She began sailing for Pecoson High School Sailing Team in ninth grade and has been on the team all four years of high school. Emmeline became team captain in 11th grade. She instructs sailing for Pecoson Parks and Rec and volunteers for Pecoson Sailing Foundation. Emmeline has applied to the Air Force Academy and, as we heard earlier, wants to be a pilot in the Air Force. Please join me in congratulating Emmeline on being recognized by All-State Sailing Honors. Congratulations to both of you, and I've seen some pictures of you sailing, so they're pretty fascinating. Now we'd like to recognize our varsity field hockey team, so we're bringing forward quite a number of our young women this evening, who, by the way, I must say you look very different here than you do when I watch you on the field. First, we'd ask that Sidney Baggett come forward. All of you will need to just stay up here until we finish. Emma Barefoot. For those who don't know, they are sisters. Skylar Brown. We'll get that to her. Samantha Grimes. Libby Harper. Avery Jackson. Emily Schwartzbaugh. Reagan Worley. We also like to recognize the coaches. Darcy Japazy. She's our head coach with our assistant coaches Dale Ames. The 2019 Pecoson Varsity Field Hockey Team finished the season as Bay Rivers District Champions, Class 1 through 3A Regional Champions, and Class 1 through 3 State Runner-Up. The season ended with a 19-2 record. The offensive team had 88 shots on goal, scoring a total of 76 goals and earning 194 offensive corners, scoring 33 of them. The defensive team had 15 shutouts, blocked 65 shots on goal, and defended 48 corners. Congratulations go to all of field hockey players for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to the sport that they love, their focus is on playing with passion and having no regrets. These girls have exemplified this every time they stepped on the field to play. Please join me in congratulating the team as a whole, and then I want to make some individual recognitions as well. So big congratulations to you. All right, we'd also like to recognize the 1 through 3 All-Region Team. First Team Samantha Johnson, Libby Harper, Avery Jackson, Abby Barefoot, Skylar Brown, Samantha Grimes, and Maddie Duncan. Please join me in congratulating them for being named the first team. Second Team Kylie Patton, Sidney Baggett, and Gwen Wood. Join me in congratulating them. An honorable mention for Region, All-Region Team Abby Canela and Reagan Worley. I'd like to also recognize some of our players who are making Class 1 through 3 All-State Team. First Team Samantha Johnson. Skylar Brown. Samantha Grimes. Abby Barefoot. And Maddie Duncan. Our second team honors went to Libby Harper. And Avery Jackson. Should be noticed that the Lady Islanders have four seniors who will be missed next season, Abby Barefoot, Abby Canela, Maddie Duncan, and Sitlali Maturano. We congratulate all of you and best of luck to you four next fall in your new endeavor. But again, let's congratulate this whole team. I have to say, I thoroughly enjoyed watching you play on the field, and those of you that don't realize it, they were competing in Class 1 through 3 and we're only, we're only 2, so they're playing against teams coming from much bigger schools and may I add, beating a lot of them. So again, let's all congratulate our incredible field hockey team.
We can meet with you.
I don't cry. Do me a favor and not shake. I don't want to be ashamed.
How are you?
So, next we have Presentation and Reports. And first up is Ms. Woodruff with Financial Update.
Good evening Chairman Carter, members of the School Board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I want to review the audit reports with you. The FY19 Audit was completed by Cherry Beckett, LLP. The School Division is included in the City's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR, as a component unit. The auditors issued several reports within the CAFR. The first one is the Report of the Independent Auditor, which describes the scope of the audit and confirms that there were no significant audit findings. On page 135 of the CAFR, the audit opinions are listed. I am pleased to report that the auditor's opinion was unmodified for the financial statements and federal awards, which is the best opinion that we can receive. In addition, the School Division had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified. You will see two findings on this report, but they're related to the city. There's also an Activity Funds Report. And the Activity Funds are those funds held by the school level and they're the responsibility of the principal. For Activity Funds, the auditors review the year-end financial statements and perform an appropriate level of test work to confirm that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the cash receipts, disbursements, and ending balances. And that was the opinion of the auditors. So, this was also a great report from the auditors. The Activity Fund Communication Letter is a report of internal control deficiencies. You will note that there were no deficiencies or material weaknesses identified. So, overall, these are excellent audit reports. Congratulations to the principals and the bookkeepers for all of their hard work. You all have the school activity reports and audit letters that I just spoke about. And a copy of the City's CAFR can be found on their website. And if you have any questions, once you have more time to review, please let me know. And that concludes my report.
Questions, comments there? Congratulations. Next is Pecos and High's Operations Update and PMS Modernization Project with Mr. Pathis.
Good evening School Board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. The Food Services will commence offering food after school at the high school for those PHS students that are staying after for various activities. This change comes about as a function of the Food Service Director meeting with students, which is something that we do. It's part of our wellness program. And it will begin here quite shortly. In the area of Maintenance, the break will be utilized by our maintenance staff to perform major enhancements and preventive maintenance to such large pieces of equipment as the high school chiller and the cooling tower that really can't be done at any other time of the year. Custodial Services will be working arduously over the break to ensure the school floors are shiny and bright when everybody comes back from their holiday. In the area of PMS Modernization, the architect continues to work on the design and cost estimates for the project. This last week, PMS staff worked very closely with the city staff, public work staff, to get some essential underground infrastructure completed in preparation for relocating the portable classrooms. And that concludes my operations report.
Questions, comments?
You give them off at 25th, Steve?
Yes, nobody works during-
Okay, I just want to check on that.
Yeah, I mean, one year we did work during the Super Bowl because a pipe burst in the school. But, other than that, we will not be working on the 25th.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
Actually, do you have a question about the food service? We're serving snack for students that are-
Yeah, a snack. They wanted some food to nosh on before they go into their evening-long activities of practice and chess club activities or whatever other activities they're engaging in. Because, you know, calorie intakes wane after lunch period, so makes for a long day.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And last Instructional Update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Scheeler, members of the Board, and Dr. Parrish. Tonight, I'm going to give you a short overview of the Program of Studies process and share two upcoming event dates with you. Each year, staff work to update our Program of Studies. This is a document that provides students, parents, and staff with the information needed to build an individual course of study that leads to graduation. Once approved by the School Board, the Program of Studies is published, printed, and posted online. The Program of Studies Committee is comprised of our middle and high school principals, the middle and high school counseling directors, our STEM and PBL project directors, the Director of Student Services, our Director of Accountability, Student Achievement, and Technology, and the Assistant Superintendent. The process begins early in September and runs into October where teachers and staff can submit recommendations for additions, deletions, changes, or updates that they'd like to see for the next school year. In late October and early November, the committee meets and they review all of these recommendations. The committee can approve, not approve, or table a recommendation that's brought to the meeting. In December, which tonight is the first presentation in the work study, I'll present you some detailed information about those recommendations for your review. In January, we bring it back to you for a vote for approval. February, the schools begin the registration process for the 2021 school year with students and parents. And in April, the schools begin to build their master schedule in preparation for the next year. And finally, tonight, we invite you to join us for two events. One is our Career Fair for grades 8 through 12 on Thursday, February 6, beginning at 7:30 a.m. at the high school. We also invite you to join us for our K-12 Instructional Night and STEM Showcase, which will be on March 12, also a Thursday. It begins at 6:30 p.m., excuse me, at 6:00 p.m. also at the high school. Students from all grade levels and content areas will be presenting their work to the public, and there will be STEM activities and demonstrations that evening. This concludes my report this evening.
Questions, comments there?
Thank you.
Do you have any public comment tonight? Thank you. Ms. Scheeler, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda?
Sure. The consent agenda includes the approval of financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request, the approval of minutes for November's regular meeting and the work session, and authorization to dispose of surplus property.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Sorry, I-
Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Other matters for consideration, first is consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy to Act 3.1, Community Involvement in Decision-Making.
Dr. Parrish? Yes, we brought this to you for first reading at our last meeting, and this is us tightening up the language in terms of what we do with all things and how we address the state requirement to have a comprehensive. So, with that said, I recommend approval of the changes to policy this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Troutman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And last item, consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy to Act 3.6, Visitors to Schools. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we wanted to bring to you a proposal to address what can sometimes be inappropriate behavior of visitors to our schools. We have seen where visitors can begin to use obscenities or have threatening behavior or language, and this is also sometimes done in front of students. This enables the principal or the designated need to stop this behavior, and it may result in us asking the visitor to leave the school. So, I just want to reassure you, this is not aimed at every little incident, but really, when we've got a visitor who is displaying this behavior that's really disruptive into the environment, and then it would be the administrators who would make the hand to handle that. So, with that said, I recommend approval of the policy changes as presented this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Scheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. And next item, communication and/or other matters by School Board and/or Superintendent.
Yes, so first, I'd like to make sure everybody knows, if they don't already, that the Governor did present his budget to the municipalities today. We now need to get details from the Department of Education as what it will exactly mean for us in the form of the calculation tool. However, I do want to just draw everybody's attention to the fact that, yes, the budget does include $1.2 billion for education, and it is new money. However, 800 million of that is as a result of the re-benchmarking that is done every two years with the start of the new biennial budget. And that re-benchmarking money is really the money that the state sees that now needs to be given to, they're already expending that money on programs in schools. So, we actually sort of get caught up in the rears with that. I say that because that re-benchmarking money comes every two years. It's not money perhaps in the way one might think it is that, oh, we can start all these new programs and do all this new thing because we're getting this great influx of money that's really intended to cover our program. So, I know that it is near the holidays, and I hate to be the Grinch, but I just, I don't want people in the community to get too excited that there's this huge influx of money coming. It's the money that we need to do what we do currently. And with the increase of VRS rates, we still, we know already that we're underwater with that. So, yes, we know we'll get some money that should help us balance it. But, I just wanted to sort of clarify what the $1.2 billion meant. And some of those funds will likely not come to us because some of it's addressed to specific programs that we don't necessarily have to offer. So, I just wanted to give the budget update, speaking of budget. But, in good news, I do want to thank Mrs. Woodruff as well as her staff because it takes a lot of work from our Finance Department to get the kind of audit results that we got, as well as bookkeepers in the schools. And I know our principals who are sitting out there work closely with them. So, thank you to all of you that resulted in having such a great audit. And in case anybody doesn't know, schools and offices are closed for two weeks starting next Monday. So, I wish everybody a very safe and relaxing winter break.
Thank you, ma'am. Jamie?
Okay, so, for this month's instructional report for Pecos and Primary School, PPS wishes all of our families and community members a safe and restful holiday season. We were thankful to close November with our annual kindergarten Thanksgiving feast. All of our kindergarten students decorated shirts, had bands, and placements to recreate the first Thanksgiving. Our hallways quickly turned from turkeys to reindeer and snowmen thanks to the art skills taught by our art teacher. Our students' parents have filled our staff with holiday spirit by sharing over 100 dozen cookies this week. As we close the week, our Bowl of the Month breakfast will celebrate our students who have shown positive behavior this month. We look forward to the time with our families and encourage everyone to spend time together over the break, reading, talking, and exploring something new. See you in the new year, Pecos and Elementary School. During the month of December, PES held a book fair at the Barnes &amp; Noble. It was a fun night that showcased student artwork and provided a STEM activity and cupcake icing stations for students. Prior to the event, there was a competition where classes could come up with a holiday drink, which could be purchased during the evening. Miss Mick's class won the competition, creating the El Fichino, a vanilla drink with caramel and mocha flavored topped with mocha drizzle. It was delicious, and a good time was had by all. The 5th grade chorus led by Mrs. Brooke sang the National Anthem before the Norfolk Admirals' Ice Hockey Game this past Saturday night. The students could also throw teddy bears onto the ice to show support for Tours for Tots. And afterwards, parents and students had the opportunity to ice skate. The PES SCA had a school-wide food drive and collected a lot of food, which was donated to the food bank. In library, we had a lesson on Great Joy, where we explored this theme of how to spread kindness to others who may be struggling during the holidays. We will finish an activity this week where we will bring great joy to folks at our local retirement home by sending them handmade holiday cards. Pecos and Middle School, the PMS Chorus and 7th and 8th grade band have been busy preparing and conducting for their winter concerts. Their performances were outstanding, and they are commended for their hard work and excellence. This week, school counselors are guiding students through career exploration activities. 6th grade students have the opportunity to take an interest inventory and practice researching specific careers. 7th grade students are being introduced to the components of an academic career plan and are beginning to develop career portfolios. 8th grade students are gathering information to complete their academic career plans. These plans will be a valuable tool used to assist them in course selection as they register for high school courses in February. We have continued our all-in focus on citizenship, and we are looking forward to continuing our all-in challenges after winter break. We would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday and are looking forward to 2020. Pecos and High School, the past month has been a busy one for Pecos and High School. Our school-wide focus on being one team continued to be evident as students worked to give back to our community. The Student Council Association celebrated our furry friends working to raise funds for PALS. The NHS conducted a children's book drive while Leo Club rang bells with the Salvation Army. And Teens for Troops gathered cookies to share with local service members and participated in the annual Reach Across America. Our classroom expanded into the community through a host of learning experiences and viewing, such as viewing the bi-topic of Harriet Tubman for students in Virginia US history, a trip to Experience Practical Life Fitness at Surge Adventure Park for our PE students, a visit to New Horizons to investigate vocational programs, and much more. The arts are also thriving at Pecos and High School as band students delivered a stellar winter concert last night, and our chorus students prepare to do the same tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. at Pecos and Middle School. Preparations are also underway for the PHS Spring Musical, an adaptation of, an adaptation of The Little Mermaid. Our students will continue to make their mark at PHS and in the community. We wish everyone have a safe holiday break and look forward to see what 2020 has in store. Thank you.
Holcomb?
I feel like I'm becoming a cheerleader for the band because last night was incredible. I felt like I was at Chrysler Hall. It was very relaxing. Mr. Sprouls is doing a tremendous job there thanks to the high school band. Let's have a safe holiday season and stay away from the, stay away from the good eggnog. You know what I'm talking about. So, that's all I have to say, sir.
Ms. Hessel?
Anything to add tonight? Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
More the same. Just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season and excited about what's to break 2020. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Troutman?
Often, we get to highlight a couple of organizations. You may have saw that Pecos and Education Foundation, that Mr. Jordan hangs out with on behalf of our board, gave a $5,000 donation to the Veterans Project at the high school and also gave a $1,000 to Pecos and Elementary School for teacher grants. That's awesome. And then also want to highly recognize the Kiwanis Club that gave $1,000 to the little school and $1,000 to the primary school and $1,000 to the high school. So, I want to make sure I get them all right. So, this is another testament to the giving nature- Like I said last time, it's critically important, all of the people that live in- talk up our school system because it is an amazing place to send your kids. Carter, when you said to the young lady, if you stick around, you're going to have a lot more.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Freeman?
I'd like to congratulate the Pecos and Primary School students with their STEM Thanksgiving. High and STEM, the literacy, we're starting off with that book. That's just awesome. We need more of that. So, great job. And I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Scheeler?
I also had the opportunity to see the, to hear the band, and it always seems to kick off the holiday season for me. So, I wish everyone the best of holidays. Be safe.
Thank you. And I hope everybody has a safe break. Come back to us in January what? Awesome. That's a nice, long break. And I'd also like to echo what Mr. Troutman said. Fight of unfunded mandates and just more and more stuff to have to do and the cutbacks that we have, snail shortages, excuse me. We have some amazing teachers that do amazing things, and there's a lot to be proud of. So, thank you all for, and with that, do we have any material for-
You do not.
Thank you, ma'am. We will adjourn.